Good evening. All glad to be here? Yes, alright. Thank you, it is, it is. It is now 6:00 PM on July 16th, 2024. I'd like to call a regular council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
Brenham?
Present.
Pew?
Here.
McBride? Livingston? Teresa?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
English?
Present.
Newton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd also like to let the record reflect that Councilwoman McBride did reach out to me in advance to notify me that she would not be in attendance for the meeting this evening. Next item on our agenda is our invocation. Councilwoman Teresa, you're recognized.
Thank you. For this evening, we have Pastor Dylan Gunnels from Emmaus Church.
Good evening. My name is Dylan Gunnels, again, Director of Mercy and Justice Ministries at Emmaus Church. I was given a couple rules, but that's always dangerous for the pastor. So I have one reminder to you, I promise not to be too long-winded. All of you sit in a position of authority and a position of power. And so I come tonight reflecting on the words of Bishop Curry, who's the Episcopal, Bishop of the Episcopal Diocese, who reminds us that the greatest power that we all obtain and the greatest power that we all devote is that which is love. My scriptures remind me that love cannot be quenched by waters. It cannot be burned by fires. My scriptures remind me that love is the way. And so I come with a simple message to each of you tonight, especially those on council, but all of us, to be reminded that love really is the way. And that is the most powerful thing that will change the society in the world in which we live in here and now, as we reflect the home that we wish to go forward to one day. And so with that, I would love to lead us in a quick prayer. Gracious God, we come before you humbled, thankful, for another day together in community, another day reminded that we are made in your image, another day reminded that we are beloved. No matter what we face in this broken world in which we live, God, you have invited us to be a part of putting it back together, piece by piece, moment by moment. And so let us be reminded tonight as we go forth doing the business of the earth, the business of the government, that there is a power far exceeding us. And the good news is that that power is a power rooted in love. And so may we all go out in the light of that love and the hope of that grace, the beauty of that forgiveness and the gift that is eternal and everlasting mercy. May we live that out in truth and indeed, give wisdom and courage to conversations and decisions tonight, and may we do it all in light of the least of these, those whom you bring closest to your heart. Amen.
Please join me in the petition. Sorry, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of minutes. We have 4A, our regular session, July 2nd, 2024.
I'm Chair.
Yes ma'am, you're recognized, Ms. Newton.
Move to approve the minutes for item 4A for regular session and item 4B, the special call meeting from July 9th.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve items 4A and B, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa? Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English? Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next is adoption of the agenda. Administrator Brown, do we have any additions or deletions?
No recommended changes, Madam Chair.
I'll entertain him.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item six, Report of the Attorney for Executive Session Items. Attorney Wright, you're recognized.
Yes, Madam Chair. There are five items for executive session. 6A, Legal Advice Regarding SE Code of Law Section 30-4-70 Pursuant to Section 30-4-70A2. B, Legal Update Zillow Inc. vs. Riston County Pursuant to 30-4-70A2. Property Inquiry, 1221 Gregg Street Pursuant to 30-4-70A2. D, Property Inquiry, 2009 Hampton Street, Columbia, South Carolina Pursuant to 30-4-70A2. And E, Personnel Matter, Grievance Reviews and Recommendations Pursuant to 30-4-70A1. And none of these matters have outside counsel.
Thank you. Based upon council rules, all these items we would take up at our executive session at the end of this meeting. Next is item seven, Citizens Input. For items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. Vice Chair Pew, do you have any individuals signed up to speak this evening?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Next is item eight, Citizens Input Must Pertain to Richland County Matters Not on the Agenda. Items for which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled cannot be addressed at this time. Vice Chair Pew, do you have anyone to sign up?
Madam Chair, no one signed up to speak at this time.
Thank you. Next is the Report of the County Administrator. Administrator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair Mackey. I provided to, for general updates to council members just a notification of a professional development program that I'll be participating in. And the calendar that's associated with that shows you the dates. But that professional development program is Leadership, South Carolina. And so that's one of the ways that I'll continue to try to improve my professional development. So I wanted to provide you that information for your, just general awareness of those future dates. And unless there are any questions about that item, I'll move on to Section B of my report. So under the Administrator's nomination, these are items that are time-sensitive based off a need. The first item comes to us from the county treasurer. If you look at page 19, I'll kind of start there in the packet where it talks about the compliance concern related to this matter. Under regulatory compliance, it lists this posting contract is necessary to post properties as required by the South Carolina Code of Laws 12-51. If this contract is not approved, the county will not have the capacity to perform these posting duties before your property could be sold at a tax sale. So the treasurer has recommended approval of this item. And as staff, we recommend approving the treasurer's request to award Palmetto Posting, Inc., the contract to post delinquent tax notices as required by state law.
You've heard the Administrator's recommendation, any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
The next item comes to us from the Community, Grants to Community Development. It is the 2024 Annual Action Plan. You have seen this before. So you might be asking, why is this before you again and again, why now? So as a part of that process, they have to perform a public comment period. That comment period was performed. There was some information that came out of that public comment period, the two recommended changes that are listed there. And because of the timeliness of when this has to be submitted, council would not have a meeting again. And so this item is before you under the nomination to include these amended changes to the 2024 Annual Action Plan. So it is staff's recommendation that the amendments be included as listed so that we could timely submit this 2024 Annual Action Plan at the completion to HUD. So that is the recommended request from staff. And we'll certainly take any questions at this time related to the amendments of the 2024 Annual Action Plan.
Per the Administrator's recommendation from staff?
I can.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Madam Chair?
You're recognized, Ms.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, so how does this impact our budget if, if any way?
So this does not actually impact our budget. These are funds that have been awarded related to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And so that is within the structure of those funds that we are awarded. And this is just a completion of a process following public comment period. Any notices of change that then get put into the action plan that show that we are listening to feedback that we're getting from the public. But it does not impact anything that the county has already done related to our budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair, both of those items are time-sensitive and do require reconsideration.
Move to reconsider?
Second.
Motion is second for reconsideration.
Brenham?
Oh.
Pew?
Oh.
Livingston?
No.
Teresa? Weaver?
No.
Baron?
Oh.
Walker? Mackey?
No.
English? Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
The other items listed on my report are under executive session items. And so at this time, that will conclude my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Administrator Brown. Next is Report of the Clerk of Council. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have anything at this time.
Thank you. Next is the Report of the Chair. I did want to take this moment for a point of personal privilege to publicly thank Administrator Brown as well as other staff who last month helped to make a fun-filled afternoon for many youth that participate in the Ram Foundation's Summer Enrichment Program. The Ram Foundation is a receiver of the Community Impact Grant Award this year. And they have provided a free summer camp for kids in North Columbia ranging in all ages. And part of that summer camp is they provide exposure to many career fields, but also introduce them to experiences they otherwise wouldn't have. And when they reached out to Administrator Brown and our clerk to help coordinate a day for the youth to learn about local government, Administrator Brown and Madam Clerk, you all really went above and beyond in that experience. And these children, they were so happy I went to go speak to them to tell all about that they got to experience and learn. They each were able to come and sit up here in our seats and learn how to run a meeting and what it means to be an elected official in all the departments that play into making their local work. And they even got to go outside in our parking lot and experience emergency vehicles and police vehicles up close and personal. And so that meant a lot to them. And I thank you for being there and proactively working to provide that experience to youth in our community. So thank you. Next is item 12, Open and Closed Public Hearing. 12A, Authorizing the Execution Delivery of a Fee in Lieu of Avalaryum Taxes and Incentive Agreement By and Between Richland County, South Carolina and US Brick LLC To Provide for Payment of a Fee in Lieu of Taxes, Authorizing Certain Infrastructure Credits and Other Related Matters. This public hearing is now open.
Madam Chair?
You're recognized.
No one signed up to speak for this item.
Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. Next is item 13, Approval of Consent Items. 13A, Case Number 24-009MA, Aaron Breeden.
Madam Chair?
You're recognized.
Move to approve items 13A, C, and D.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve items 13, excuse me, 13A, B, C, and D. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Livingston?
Teresa? Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item 13E, An Ordinance Authorizing an Easement to the City of Columbia for the Sanitary Sewer Main Located at 1871 Amherst Drive, Richland County, TMS Number 07415-01-01. Pete. Second. A motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
You're recognized, Ms. Newton.
Move to approve items 13F.
Second.
Motion is second for 13F and G, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Pew, Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Do any of those need to be reconsidered? We're good?
Items A through D?
I'm moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second for items 13A through D for reconsideration. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Oh.
Pew?
Oh.
Livingston? Teresa?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Baron?
Oh.
Walker? Mackey?
Oh.
English? Newton? Motion fails.
Thank you. Next, Item 14, Third Reading Items. 14A, An Ordinance Amending the Richland County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 5, Animals and Fowl.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion is second for approval, any discussion?
Thank you, everybody.
Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next is Item 14B, Authorizing the Execution Delivery of a Fee in Lieu of Avalaryum Taxes and Incentive Agreement By and Between Richland County, South Carolina and US Brick LLC To Provide for Payment of a Fee in Lieu of Taxes, Authorizing Certain Infrastructure Credits and Other Related Matters. We have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. And would like to, sorry, miss this area. Would like to recognize Mr. Parker, who's a Senior VP with US Brick, who is here visiting us this evening. Thank you for attending. Appreciate it. Alright. Next is 14C, Authorizing the imposition of a 1% transportation, sales, and use tax within Richland County pursuant to Section 4-37-30 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, determining, one, the categories of projects to be funded with the tax; two, the maximum time for imposition of the tax; and three, the estimated capital cost of the projects, directing the Board of Voter Registration and Elections of Richland County to conduct a countywide referendum on the imposition of the tax and the issuance of general obligation bonds, prescribing the contents of the ballot questions and other related matters.
Move for approval, ma'am.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion? You're recognized, Ms. Newton.
Madam Chair, is this the appropriate time to propose a modification to the principles that were adopted for the penny?
No ma'am, the principles document is later on, which is included in number 19A.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
I just want to indicate I will be a yes vote on this and want to be clear to my constituents at least that what this means is that I want this matter to go before the voters of Richland County. Doesn't necessarily mean I agree with every little bit of structure or content and the ordinance, but I do want it to go before the voters. I think the voters are the right group of people to decide whether we want this tax to continue. And I do want to affirm once again that this is structured so that there would never be a doubling of the transportation tax. Second, or any renewed penny tax would only begin to be collected after the existing penny tax completed its collection. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Brenham. Would like to just also point out for the record that the, we held our public hearing last Tuesday and received great feedback and engagement from residents. And some of those comments that were received were actually incorporated into an updated ordinance that was included in our packet. And so want to make sure the public knows that we did hear you and we addressed comments related to greenways as well as cleaning up in the ordinance, and those are reflected. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Want to take another moment of personal privilege. Y'all know I don't do this often, so... But I want to really take some time and thank this body as well as thank staff. This was a long process that we began early, well, actually, end of last year, really wanting to take the time to evaluate the county's transportation needs and work together along with the public and receive feedback to develop what we believe a solution moving forward for our community. And so this proposed transportation penny to go on the ballot for voters is really a reflection of that feedback and county council being committed to planning and finding a solution to fund the roads that we need as well as our public transportation system within Richland County. Want to make sure we give a special thank as well to our T-PAC. The Transportation Advisory Committee worked just as hard as county council and staff, and they met as needed to get things done and provide us the feedback that we needed to get this ordinance passed in the timely fashion. So thank you to our T-PAC. We are full now. And so we look forward to continuing to work with T-PAC as we continue to execute the current penny that we have and appreciate the continued engagement with them as well. So thank you again, council and staff. I appreciate all the hard work.
Madam Chair?
You're...
14A, B, and C need to be reconsidered.
Yes, sir. Alright. Have a motion for 14A, A, B, and C for reconsideration, and we have a second? Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Pew?
No.
Livingston?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Teresa?
Yes, sorry, no. Sorry, Paul, I mean, Mr. Livingston.
Weaver, no.
Baron?
Oh.
Walker? Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
Oh.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Next is Item 15, Report of the Economic Development Committee. Councilman Livingston, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, Item 15A, approving a sponsor affiliation to John in one of, one of more fee agreements between McIntyre Produce, Inc. and McIntyre Trucking Company, McIntyre Limitation Partnership in Richland County, South Carolina, and other matters related thereof. And the committee's recommendation was for approval.
You've heard the committee's recommendation, does not require a second? Is there any discussion or questions? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.[1558.96]
Pugh?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
Madam Chair, item 15B, approving the assignment to the Waters Crosspoint LLC of all the rights, interests, and obligations of Crosspoint Atkyon LLC under the certain public infrastructure credit agreement by and between Crosspoint Atkyon LLC and Richland County, South Carolina. Reference to credit agreement authorized in county's execution, delivery of an assignment and assumption of public infrastructure credit agreement in connection with such assignments. The committee's recommendation was for approval.
You've heard the committee's recommendation. Any discussion or questions?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
I'm recusing myself due to my parent company representing this client.
Thank you. English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item 15, authorized expansion of the boundaries of the last seven quarters of industrial park jointly developed with every account to include certain properties located in Richland County, the execution delivery of a public infrastructure credit agreement to provide for public infrastructure credits to a company identified for the time being as Project Flare. And the committee's recommendations for first reading approval.
Heard the committee's recommendation. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
You're recognized, Ms. Teresa.
I just wanted to extend my appreciation for the amount of affordable housing that's included in this and wanted to thank staff and my colleagues for bringing this forward. Thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk?
Branham?
No.
Pugh?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
I'm recusing myself due to my parent company representing this client.
Thank you. English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair, that completes the report of the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you. Next is 16, Report of the Strategic Planning Ad-Hoc Committee. And 16A is a website contract award recommendation. The Strategic Planning Ad-Hoc Committee met and are pleased to move one step forward in completing a goal in our strategic plan, which is the redesign of the county's website. Our procurement office received a record-breaking 36 responses, which is amazing. And so they spent a good bit of time going through all those and have selected who they believe is the best qualified candidate. And they also project a completion date of August 1st, 2025 for a new website. Your hands, that's amazing. All right, so the committee recommends approval of staff's selection. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
So I don't have... I just want to say thank you to this committee because of the work that you guys have done on that committee. I know this was one of the hardest tasks set forth to align us with our strategic plan. But I'm excited about the opportunity for this website to come to fruition and to give us really the facelift that we need to really put us forward in looking online how we conduct business. So this is exciting. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
Thank you. Does that need to be reconsidered?
To reconsider?
Second.
Thank you. Second for reconsideration. Madam Clerk?
Branham?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
Mackey? No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. That concludes the report of the Strategic Ad-Hoc Planning Committee. Next is Report of the Detention Center Ad-Hoc Committee. Vice Chair Pugh, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a general update from the Alvin S. Glenn Detention Center given by our administrator, Mr. Brown. When some of those updates, we have new advertisement for recruiting and retention when it comes to employment at the detention center. As far as infrastructure updates, we have 112 more locks to be placed on doors, which means the project could be 100% complete. That is two dormitories, which house 56 beds. So that means we have 56... We have two dorms with 56 doors, which means we have 112 locks that need to be put on to complete that project. We also discussed a new... We just facilitated a conversation about a new detention center. We didn't make any decisions. No action was taken at this ad hoc committee meeting. We just talked about some of the needs... Some of our needs at the detention center going forward when we start discussing a new detention center. And C, personnel matter, of course, will be discussed in executive session. That concludes my report for this ad hoc committee meeting, ma'am.
Thank you. You've heard the report. Next is Report of the Office of Small Business Opportunity Ad-Hoc Committee. Vice Chair Pugh?
Ma'am, we also... There was no action taken at this ad hoc committee meeting as well. We got a few updates from the Office of Small Business. They have a few great workshops that's going on. One that I can remember off the top of my head, they're collaborating with the City of Columbia for a September the 18th event. Advertisement is coming very soon. Those at that workshop will be discussing funding opportunities and discussing how to do business with federal, state, and local government. We also discuss current funding opportunities, which there is no current funding opportunities in our Office of Small Business. So there was a motion on the floor to direct Mr. Brown to work with staff to come back and find opportunities for us to try to establish a revolving loan fund for offices for small businesses in Richland County. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Recognized.
Mr. Pugh is absolutely correct. Mr. Pugh, that item would be an action item that the body would have to vote on to do what you did in item B. So we're prepared to do that, but there would be an action item for the council. Yes, sir.
So what I've heard from your report is that you all made a motion and it did pass and come out of committee to direct Administrator Brown to work with staff to establish a revolving loan fund for small businesses in Richland County. All right, so that motion recommendation comes out of committee and doesn't need a second, but is there any discussion regarding that?
Chair.
You're recognized.
Have any information about the terms of the program? Or is it intended to be repaid, repaid with interest? Who pays it?
You're recognized. I would... Yes.
The motion was made to get Mr. Brown to work with staff to explore options for us to establish a revolving loan fund.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
I'm back for another vote then before we actually established something like that? Madam Chair.
You're recognized, Attorney Wright.
From the committee, it's my understanding that the committee wanted Mr. Brown and his staff to come back to the committee with options so that it can be discussed in committee. So it's not something that would be final to come before full council. It would actually stay in committee for discussion before it would come back to actually come to full council.
Any further discussion? I apologize for not stating that correctly. I was not there.
Madam Chair.
Oh, you're recognized, yes.
Just to confirm then, so we're voting to authorize them to then take options back to the committee?
Yes.
Yes. I apologize.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right. Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
Great. Thank you. All right, next is item 19A, Adopting the 2024 Penny Projects Principles and Categories. So 19A is a companion document with 14C, our transportation penny sales tax. This process... During our process, we discussed establishing a list of penny projects, principles, and categories that would guide us through how we would prioritize and how we would operate moving forward with a new transportation penny. This document has gone through T-PAC and includes their feedback as well as feedback of council members that we've had through work sessions. You'll see the packet was included in your agenda, but there's also a packet on your desk that also has updates that reflect the recent public hearing and feedback that was given at that time. I am open to any motions at this time. That was just my overview.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
As it relates to the penny, I move that we modify one phrase, which appears in item F, the new role of T-PAC. Specifically, the current language says, "The T-PAC, in cooperation with the county council and the Transportation Ad-Hoc Committee, shall conduct an annual State of the Penny to keep citizens informed regarding progress in addressing transportation needs." And I propose that we swap the county and the transportation... Sorry, and the T-PAC, so that my motion is that we change that sentence to "the county, in cooperation with the Transportation Ad-Hoc Committee, and T-PAC shall conduct an annual State of the Penny."
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to change the language of item F in the Penny Projects Principles and Categories document. Any further discussion?
Appears on page six in the handout on the dais.
Thank you. You're recognized, Mr. Walker.
Chair, this is more so a question to the maker of the motion. Councilwoman Newton, have you given any thought as to what the State of the Penny would look like? Are we talking about a speech? Are we talking about a presentation? I know maybe that was earlier this year, latter part of last year. There was some chatter about what the State of the Penny would or should look like. So any thought given to that as you were contemplating your motion?
Thank you. So it's my understanding that the State of the Penny that we had... I guess it was this year, time flies, was the first one that we had. And so it wasn't my intention to necessarily script out exactly what it would be, but that we as the body who are accountable for the penny as opposed that we would play a stronger role. And when I say "we," I mean the county in shaping that. And so in the language of my motion, it remains in collaboration with both the Transportation Ad-Hoc Committee and T-PAC. So that would be at the discretion of the body and the collaboration with those parties. And certainly, as our needs change and the program changes, the type of address that our citizens need could also change.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Any further discussion related to the 2024 Penny's Projects Principles and Categories? All right, so we... Our vote was just for the sentence change in item F. So if there's no further discussion, I entertain a motion to approve the entire document with that change.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the 2024 Penny Projects Principles and Categories. Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair. Move for reconsideration?
Second.
Sorry, I heard motion and a second discussion. I was going to ask, did it need to be reconsidered? Yes, okay. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
Newton? No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Next is...
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 19B and...
Second.
Motion and second for 19B and C. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Move to reconsider?
Second.
Of a motion for reconsideration of B and C? Okay, and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Livingston? Teresa?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker? Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. We are now at item 20, which is executive session. Earlier in the meeting, we had items 6A through E that did not require outside counsel. And so those items would now take place during our session. Attorney Wright? Anything else you want to add?
No, nothing else.
Okay.
Move to go into executive session?
Second.
A motion and second to go into executive session to discuss items 6A, B, C, D, and E.
What about 17C?
C, thank you. Is that...
Shouldn't that be included too?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wright. Can you make a motion to amend? Original motion was for 6A, B, C, D, and E. Who made that motion?
I believe Ms. Barron.
Would you be willing to amend your motion to include 17?
Yes.
C.
I second that.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride. Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker.
Mackey. Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Now an executive session.
I move to adjourn.
But moved to come out of executive session.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
The motion is second to come out of executive session, Madam Clerk.
Brenham?
Yes.
View?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that no action was taken during executive session. All right, well, that was item 20. Next on the item is, on the agenda is item 21. Motion period. You have to speak up.
Adam Chair, under the order.
I thought we were going to go, I thought we were going to go back to those items.
We don't, no ma'am.
May I move back?
I'm happy to entertain any motion.
I'm still focused.
And a chair.
You recognize, Councilman Weaver?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to authorize Director Brown to accept the results of the grievance committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the results of the grievance committee. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
View?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Adam Chair? You're recognized.
In reference to item 6C, I'd like to make a motion to direct the administrator to discuss options as discussed in exec, in executive session.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, maybe we need a friendly amendment on that one?
You state your friendly amendment, Mr. Rasio.
Thank you. I believe we need to reject?
Correct.
That, and, and then authorize the, the administrator to?
I got you.
Okay.
So, um.
It's ma'am, you're recognized.
I move to direct the administrator to reject, reject the proposals submitted and to discuss options as discussed in the executive session.
You have a second?
Second.
The motion is second, any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
View?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Any additional motions before I move on to item 21?
Adam Chair?
You recognize, Councilman Baron?
In reference to 6D, I'd like to make a motion for, to direct the administrator to have additional conversation and explore options as it relates to 6D as discussed in executive session.
Second. A motion and a second, any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
View?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. We're at item 21, motion period, I did not receive any motions in advance. Item 22.
To adjourn?
Second.
Motion is second for adjournment, Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
View?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.